Last item tonight is another study session on the marketplace redevelopment, but this time it is the theater site, otherwise known as parcel D.
Okay, so we are on parcel D and this is, again, you've a study session which you saw in January, and this is our third study session on this site. So, on this project, the main changes are more in terms of design refinements and landscape refinements. The basic program has not changed, so you have Shellmount here on the top, Market Drive at the bottom, 63rd Street on your right, and 64th on the left. The main lobby remains where it used to be at the corner of Shellmount and 63rd. You have townhomes along 63rd as well as Market Drive. And along Shellmount, you have a fitness center and there's also a play area for kids that they have introduced. The vehicular entry occurs on 64th Street, it's shown in red, and it's your two garage with a podium building with two levels of parking and five levels of residential on the top. You have bike storage at the second level, which is right here, and there are bike rooms and lockers, and there's elevator which goes down to it. So this is your basic framework, which hasn't changed, two levels on top of five. So what the change that they have done, again, like in the previous building, is to increase the number of two bedrooms and three bedroom units, and they've increased it where both the two and three are about 55% of the total unit count, which is about the same as in Shellmount building as well. The two plus three constitute about 55% of the total count. Again, like in the last project, Arnold has been working with them, it's been a work in progress, and he will continue working with them in order to make sure that the two and the three bedrooms comply as much as possible to the family design guidelines, which you approved earlier this evening. So this was the January study session, you know, and this is the Shellmount elevation. We've got a mix of materials, a pretty similar mix in terms of plaster, cement panels, and a bit of lap sidings. The main feature of the building is this vertical element at the corner, which is the lobby, corner of Shellmount and 63rd, and this is what you see in your current plans, a little bit more defined, they've kind of broken down all the various elements. And in the packet, they've also shown a little bit more details of each block in terms of how the windows are insessed and things like that, and I'm sure they will show that as well. This is what you saw in January, and this is the 63rd Street elevation, so you have the main lobby here, this is the vertical element, there's a punch-out that has not changed as well in the current proposals. So it is, again, a little bit more refinements in terms of how the window treatments are done, but the basic concept is pretty much remained unchanged. There is, they did introduce a new sign for Avalon, I just wanted you to note that. Don't have too many details on the sign in terms of why it's going to be lit, but I'm sure that will come at a future date. This is the Market Drive, townhouses at the bottom, and this was the mechanical areas. And this is the 64th Street, which is the vehicular entry here, and basically garage elevation, and you have equipment and equipment area on this corner. So what they have just started to do in this current proposal is work on the courtyard renderings, and also work on some of the courtyard programming of the space. So what they have is, in addition to the swimming pool, they've introduced a climbing element for children and what they're calling a community chalkboard, not exactly sure what is that supposed to serve, but I'm sure they will tell us more about that. You'll have a club room, and then of course seating and barbecuing facilities at the courtyard. So, the applicant is here, will be going more into the details of their design refinements, and the questions remain the same in terms of design, preference for materials, and the unit mix. So that concludes my presentation. If there are questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise they do have a presentation.
Questions for staff?
Just like to mention that this proposal has 12 townhomes, all of them are two and three-bedroom, eight of them are two-bedroom, and four of them are three-bedroom. The earlier proposal had about five townhomes, and they were all two-bedrooms.
I did have some questions. Maru, the staff report on page three says that there's two levels of bike parking. I couldn't find any bike parking on, I think it was the first level?
You know, yes, they had it in the earlier version, in this version it's all upstairs.
On the second level, okay. And I don't know if you could tell me this, or if I need to wait to talk with the architect, but again, I'm not clear on the double-decker parking. I know there's different kinds of things, I don't know what they're proposing. There's the wall mount that kind of stagger, there's also the ones like at the bike stations that pull down, so just was wondering if they, or someone could tell me what kind of double-decker bike racks they're planning?
I think we'll wait for the applicant to clarify, because we don't, I don't have that information.
And then, listening to the previous tenants of the Ambassador Project talk about visitor parking, I noticed there's only four spots in here for visitors for this whole building, and we're looking at like 200 units, so does the city feel that's adequate, or are they using public market parking to cover their?
So, the parking is being looked at overall, and so the next time that this comes, the parking calculations will be presented to you, so if you can just wait on that in terms of both visitor as well.
I just think that we need more visitor parking in both those buildings, this one particularly, because it's over 200 units. And then, just again, I could probably wait and talk to the applicant about my other question.
All right, great, thanks, Maru. All right, so we'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Tom Cox with TCA Architects. Let me just pull this back up. Which button did you hit? I'm going to wash this time. Oh, thank you. Good evening. So, I'm going to actually skip in the interest of a little speed here. God, I just went crazy. There. To the last study session that we had, and the takeaway comments that we had, and there are probably more takeaway comments, welcome to discuss those, but two of the big ones were like the design overall, generally speaking, like the design, but to continue to develop it in terms of texture, material, connections, layering. And the second one was provide more family-friendly units. Again, there's probably more comments, and as we go through it, certainly we'll bring those up. Again, the intention of the building, it's a four-sided building, Shellmount is facing east, we have a south side that faces 63rd, and then we have adjacent park, and adjacent residential building, two adjacent residential buildings also. This is the primary layout of the building. This shows the circulation, connectivity to the street, connectivity to the marketplace, connectivity to the park, connectivity to the bike lane, crosswalks, and also in-and-out access to the building parking also. One of the things we were trying to invoke, evoke again, was to pick up on some of those key elements of Emeryville. We think there's a very strong imagery that we're pulling from the public market, of course. There's a number of industrial, old industrial buildings with brick and color, as well as some contemporary buildings for office structures, and we're trying to find something that really speaks to a lot of those influences. Part of what we're doing here is we're treating each of the sides, or one side in two corners and a back, not a back, an east-north elevation differently, but using the same materials, much like we did on parcel A, where we try and weave those materials around the building, but treat each of those sides of the building somewhat differently. This is the new corner rendering. We have adjusted a lot of the window sizes, more light and air, more openness, but I'd like to just continue around and kind of talk about how some of those changes have manifested themselves. So this is a call-out, and it's a little hard to see up here, I've got one here, of the materials that we're anticipating, and we'll get to that material board in a second, but these are key elevations with blown-up sections of each of the corners. Primarily on 63rd Street, as Maru mentioned, we have the large corner of the building at Shellmount and 63rd that is kind of that almost departing the marketplace building, and we've located our leasing and a lot of our recreation amenities there. And as we turn the corner, we have the townhouses on the upper-right slide right there, and we're using those same materials with planters, porches, high glass, entry doors, as we come around the corner. So you get a sense of the whole building on that, did we ever name that road?
Market Road.
What's it called?
Market Road.
Market Road, I like that.
It's right down in the corner of your slide.
Well, yeah, yes it is. No laughing. So that's the townhouse side. This is a description of the materials, and again, we're looking at similar materials to what we used on Building A. We're looking at cementitious panels with a nice sheen to it, we're looking at some board form, we're also looking at exterior plaster, but I think we've used it in both buildings actually, rather judiciously, and in this case, we're actually at about 28% plaster, slightly less than Building A. The interior courtyards were a discussion item last time, is what did they look like and how did they function? And one of the things that we didn't do is we really didn't focus on the family-friendly area of the interior courtyard. We probably didn't focus on it because we hadn't evolved it quite enough yet. So what we did is we spent a lot of time with owner and with landscape architect, and we've now zoomed in on that area and identified a much more friendly, playful environment. Are you, we didn't talk, are you going to get up and talk about the landscape? Yeah, that'd be great, I think it'd be a good time. Last time I skipped over this, and, so we'll start with that.
Hello again, I'm George. One thing, just as part of the landscape package, and partially in response to some of the things that came out about parcel A, like regarding the crosswalk location and streetlights, the design of Shellmount is being driven, is under the scope of Hart Howerton as part of the overall Shellmount design, and the crosswalk location is coming from their discussion and their investigation of other conditions around the street. So, we are showing it on our plans, and eventually stuff on the sidewalk will be sort of within the scope for construction, but as far as design considerations, we haven't, we're talking to them, but ultimately we're not making those decisions, so just want to address that point.
Yeah, just, those will all be in the approvals that come before you for the parcel C and the Shellmount realignment, they're all contained there.
And then, yeah, here at this courtyard, I mean, it's a quite different condition from parcel A where it's obviously one building and one larger space, so it offers different opportunities than the other courtyard, or courtyards of the building. And this one is, has really been very much about family activities from the beginning, and to that effect, you see a pool, which, as a parent, I know is probably child activity number one, and as well as like a larger play space with the barbecues and dining located adjacent to the children's play space, so that's what you're seeing there in the upper left-hand corner, and it's shaded as well, you know, for sun protection. And the idea about, the idea driving the selection of play activities or amenities is really about, again, about interaction for the kids, and giving kids a chance, rather than very prescriptive play space, something that is more amorphous, that either kids can program, or families can program themselves by bringing stuff down to play there, or, you know, could be programmed more generally by the building management. So, you have some kind of play structure that's kind of sculptural as well, so it's appealing to different people, obviously that's not the final design, but the idea is that there's something that's more, again, amorphous so that people can interact with it in different ways, and it's not so static. And then, a chalkboard wall and dining areas, and there's several, a few barbecue areas located around the courtyard, so there's ones there next to the play space, there's also kind of a lounge area with a fire deck where you see there's an indoor/outdoor fireplace, so there's an amenity room inside, and that fireplace is, you know, it's interfaced with from both inside and outside, so, as well as lounge seating and then some other elements, but those are the real interactive, family-oriented elements of the courtyard design. And there have been some changes from the previous presentations and iterations, and that is largely being driven by stormwater treatment requirements, and the need to get stormwater treatment planters into the courtyards, so that's been a, that's been a strong driving factor, or one of the driving factors in sort of, in how this is laid out.
So with most of those stormwater planters, it's one of my pet peeves that they take up all the space in the open spaces and the community space, so you're doing stepped, like seat walls and things like that, to try to make the spaces a little bit more usable, and not just be walking along four-foot-high concrete planter boxes?
Yes, yeah, that's something that's being taken into consideration, both from, within the courtyard and from within the units too. So, the taller planters will be stepped back from the unit walls or the windows, as well as from the space, the usable space within the courtyard.
And could you just talk a little bit about the wind, the sun, and the pool being on the shady side of the courtyard? Got a shadow study that shows that that's where it's going to be in the shade most of the time.
There is a shadow study?
Just look at it.
Okay, is there?
It's really not. You have the shadow study in that package. Well, you have it in the package.
Yeah, we have it in our package.
I think it's primarily in the sun for six, the main six months, from May to September, I'm not sure.
You know, I had the same thought, but I didn't want to take the sun away from the children's play area either.
You, um, okay.
So, this is, this is June, and you can see the courtyard is mostly in the sun.
You should pick up the hand mic, because the people on TV can't hear you.
Is it working?
Talk into it in the front.
Okay. How's that? Got it, thanks. So the first one here is June, and as I think you can see, for most of the day, from nine o'clock in the morning until three in the afternoon, the entire courtyard gets pretty good sunshine. This one is September, so this would be fall, it's also the spring, they're exactly the same, for whatever that's worth, and you can see that the pool area is actually here, and is in sunshine, and it's in sunshine most of the day. In December, not going swimming. So, does that help?
Sort of. It still looks like it's, at the times when it would be most used, it looks like it's on the shady side, but I do understand there's a trade-off with the children's play area and the other places, but I just would hope that you continue to look at it and make sure you get the optimal space for, I mean, all the sun chairs being in a place where it actually gets sun in the afternoon, because I would think more people would be out in the afternoon than in the nine in the morning.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to move the pool fully, you know, in this diagram upwards, but maybe by rotating around where the lounge chairs are, they could be in a location where they got sun more often.
Anyway, something to look at a little bit.
So that's the pool deck. So the big, the big item on the takeaway was the family-friendly units, and I can, I think you can see by the diagram, we have managed to increase our two- and three-bedroom units to 55%. A lot of those units are oriented to the courtyard, and unit count is almost the same, 229 previously, and 223 today. Okay. So we included the same matrix and went through it pretty judiciously. These are typical two- and three-bedroom units, and we called out the amenities and the unit features for each of those units by number. So dedicated dining areas, defined entry areas, side-by-side washer and dryers, full height linens, separate sleeping areas from the living, minimum 60-foot deck, large room for storage, and there's other things, like the dedicated study areas and places to park, large closet to park strollers and bikes. The townhouse units that line the street, these are each two-story townhouse units. We have these units about 18 inches above the street level, with the kitchen, has been given some input on the family-friendly side of this. We moved the kitchen around and put it on the glass and sink as well. The living room, dining room, study area, and then the dedicated half-bath. We are currently taking a door from the back, from the corridor, and I know that's a discussion item, we can discuss that a lot, but we are doing that. Upstairs, we have two bedrooms that are located, and they do have windows, I know it doesn't show in the drawing, but there are definitely windows in the bedrooms. So those are the two-bedroom, I think we have two-bedroom and three-bedroom townhouses. And this is the permeability of the podium. I know we had discussions about being able to get on and off at multiple opportunities. The units that are oriented to the podium deck, the inside courtyard, have lots of visibility, light and air, and there's a good deal of permeability getting on and off of the podium from a variety of locations. Love to answer all your questions.
Thanks.
I just had the one, and it was kind of simple, and looking at the plans, I couldn't see how you guys are securing the garage and where you're putting the Zipcar in relation to that, because I know once it's inside a gate of security, it's kind of hard to get at the car, so I don't even know if you'd really need to show me so much as saying that has been a consideration, and that the Zipcar will be accessible, but the garage will be secure.
Here, put it on here.
Maru will come turn it on for you?
Technical assistance here. Okay, okay.
So, right here, we have a secured garage entrance, and then the first stall that you go into is Zip Cars, and then I imagine the customer for the Zip Cars would be entering the garage from the entrance.
Okay. So then the Zip Car user will use their Zip Card or something to access the secure doors and go in, so it's not an open garage at that point, they have to go in through a security thing, okay.
I noticed on the roof plan, you have space for future solar, why is it future? Why are you not doing solar now?
We're just going by the state requirement on the solar.
Yeah, I think the state requirement is that we could plan for future solar, so what we're doing is we're evaluating, you know, that whole option of doing it, but it will be engineered and set up for it. And we're, as we're evaluating the next pieces of it, you know, that's something we could do potentially sooner or later, but it would be set up for it.
The corner piece, I believe that's where you're calling for the aluminum windows. I think the plans said aluminum windows at corner only. And in this rendering, you're showing them as if the frame of the windows protrudes from the face of the wall, which I like, but I'm just curious, it looks like they're creating a shadow line. Is that your intention, or are they recessed, or what?
I don't think they were intended to be...
So, yes, those aluminum windows will have those protruding objects that defines the frames, and then within, there would be aluminum, real aluminum glazing that's operable for the bedrooms.
So the frame or something, or some metal frame will protrude from the face of the wall to create this sort of frame?
Right, so we need to develop the design a little further, in order to know like how exactly the detail works, but that is our intention.
By the way, Yoon is our designer on the project, and is doing an exceptionally good job.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment on this item, so if anyone would like to speak, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll bring it back for discussion.
Just a few comments. So I do encourage you to make sure that that detail continues, I think it's a key part of making that corner work. And also the metal fins further down Shellmount, those were called out as painted metal fins that frame those balconies, and I think that's key as well. When I was initially looking at the elevations, I wasn't super excited, but then when I saw the rendering and the depth that that provided, I thought that was a nice element. Again, the, I think it's the units B1 through 3 are all kind of that dormitory-style unit again, which I think makes the ratios for family-friendly units sort of, it skews it unfairly when you consider those as family-friendly units, because I don't think that that's really the way that they're going to operate, or the way that they're designed. And the only other comment really was that some of the, some of the units... some of the units, especially some of the three-bedroom units, seem like they need a little bit of refinement to streamline them. They're a little labyrinthian.
I appreciate the increase in the townhouses. I think that this is a better location for family-friendly than the one on the Shell Mound side, actually, being closer to the park and, you know, a little bit more residential feeling setting. My comments regarding the layouts of the units are the same as they were for the other one. They do, I think, some of, a good number of them need to be rejiggered so that they are actually family-friendly with the configuration of the bedrooms being less like two adult, separate residents in them. Again, I think that the townhouses are working okay, and I think I'm glad to see that there are more of those. The solar on the roof, I really don't think that apartments need that scale of signage on them, so I would really discourage having such a large illuminated sign on the, the vertical sign that's on the Shell Mound side. And other than that, I appreciate the refinement that's going on. I like the materials pretty much. I assume when you're saying painted metal, you're meaning powder-coated, right? Yeah, yeah, good. So aside from the configuration of the units, to have more of them be actually family-friendly, that's, that's my main concern. Thanks.
Well, I've been fixated on the delivery truck issue for the market, and I've come up with a suggestion that the market parcel be reconfigured so the market goes all the way across to 63rd Street, and that the apartments be pulled down to the west side of that parcel and face on, only onto Christie Park, and that the 63rd Street may be made a little wider on the market side so the trucks can pull up parallel to the building rather than having to back into a loading dock. And they could use that entire length of the market as a parking lane for their trucks to unload and then pull out towards Shell Mound. At the same time, I'd recommend that the townhouses be moved from the 63rd Street side over to the 64th Street side so that there's no residential units facing directly onto 63rd. As far as the elevations go, I'd prefer to see the same color on most of the elevations and not all these variations. Other than that, I think it's a handsome building.
Well, first of all, I have a correction that actually should be on both sets of plans, and it's just a minor correction, but it's about transportation. And it shows that there, on page A03, that there's an Emmergrau round stop in front of the Pacific Park Plaza Building, right at the lawn area, and there is no Emmergrau round stop. They're all, the Emmergrau round and all the buses stop at the corner where the project of Avenue 64 is. The Transbay buses and the Emmergrau parks there. You may want to show there is a casual carpool just to the south of the Pacific Park Plaza Towers that's heavily used. So you may want to show that in your renderings and put the bus stop in the, in the proper location with the other buses. On page one of the landscape plans, the sidewalk information is kind of inconsistent. On the far-left elevation, the top is marked as 63rd Street, but I think you actually mean Market Drive on that plan. And the sidewalk widths are located, and that particular plan from top to bottom are measured at eight-and-a-half feet, eight feet, and eight-and-a-half again. And the whole block to the right is shown on 64th is eight feet. I think we want to be consistent in the plans, but I think above all, we have to make sure that the clear walk space, not including planning areas and anything else, is at least eight feet all the way around. So that's the main concern, is to make sure that we stay consistent with our plans that if we walk away, the whole place is at least eight feet, and that, when the plans come back, that they be consistent with what you're planning to put in there.
Does your heat worry that?
So I'm talking the landscape plan, which is page one. And on the far-left elevations in the top is marked as 63rd Street, and I believe that that's actually Market Drive, that elevation. And the sidewalk widths are listed from the top to the bottom as eight-and-a-half, then eight feet, then eight-and-a-half again. In the whole block view, it shows on 64th Street as being eight foot. And then the changes I would like to see is, again, bigger windows on the bike shop on the east wall. So what you're showing is that there's a corner window, and I think what might be better is to put a bar, a larger window on the east wall to receive more light from the street, and put the door around on the north wall perhaps. Since your bike parking, again, is way over the required amount, I'd like to see some bike lock, bike lockers in the bike room, spaces available from what I could see on the south wall and the west walls. And in the center section, you could probably use the triangular type, and if you need a link to come, that makes those, I have that. And this might be hard for you guys to see, because I'm going back to the plans in January again, is I'm not pleased with the changes in the fenestration I see for the windows on the northeast, the northwest, and the southwest corners of the building. The windows seem to be in lesser quantities there, or lesser in size, and I just think it makes the building look closed off. So refer back to your plans from January and just look at the two differences. And I think the rendition you had in January was a much better look for that. And on the January plans, those were in page A51, 2 and 3. So I agreed with Commissioner Gunkel on the metal framings that protrude out from the windows on the, the main corner. I think that's a real design feature. They've done that at a hotel or a, in, in Berkeley, right across from the high school, and I think it's a really nice element. I, I'd like to see them not come out too far to where they actually block the people's view, but I think that's a really nice accent that's kind of contemporary, modern-looking. So I definitely agree with them on that. I still love the building overall. On A32 in the top left, I love the top-floor setbacks and the overhang on the bottom left of the townhouses, how the second story, that's kind of tucked under. I really like the difference in elevation on there and how they're set under the upper floor to the right of that in that rendition or that illustration. And I just love the elevation of this corner that we're looking at here. I just really think it's magnificent. And I like the larger windows you guys are employing throughout the whole process. Living in a place with big windows, it makes a big difference. It's where the window, so overall, nice work. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I think this building looks, looks great. I really like it. I, thanks for all the hard work on it. I will just repeat a couple of things that, yeah, I do think the, the, some of the unit floor plans need a little bit more work to make them conform with the family-friendly guidelines that we just recommended approval of. The, I really like the placement and utilization of the blade sign, but I could also support a reduction in its size, but in general, I like it. The, so I will say one thing, which is a very important point for me, is that the, the townhome units, I really like their placement. I like that you've, I think you've increased the number of them. They, given that all of the entries appear to be flush from the front, that interior courtyard is very much redundant. And I think that space could be added back into the units to make them larger. And really, a person coming from the garage would only have to walk about an extra 25 feet to get to their front of their unit rather than the back of their unit.
Wouldn't be handicapped accessible, though.
No, I think they would be. I think all of the entries are flush.
There's stairs. They show them right on...
But not on this side.
Great.
Well, maybe I'm wrong. I'll, I'll ask the architect to clarify that in a second. Right.
Yeah, let's see, the stairs. And, and the elevations show a little stairs, too.
Okay. Well, we'll get clarification on that. I think that is, I think that kind of concludes my, my comments. So, yeah, can we get, can you clarify that issue about the, the front of the townhome units?
Yes, they all do have steps, and accessibility is a key issue. And I'll get the code section for you, and we'll review it together.
Okay.
Happy to provide it. Okay? Thanks.
Put a lift in each one.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, just getting back to the pool and your comment, I mean, it does, I would imagine most people, especially families, kids are going to be using the pool in the afternoon, and its current location is the shadiest spot in the afternoon in the courtyard. So it seems moving it further east would bring it into the sun. And I know that you'd be sacrificing maybe the play area to the shade, but it seems like a pool is, you know, it, it needs the sun a little bit more than the play area.
I don't think the pool needs to be sunny as much as the area adjacent to the pool needs to be.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought, too, is you could, you could position the, the pool and the lounge area. I mean, it's the lounge area that wants to be sunny more than the pool itself, right? So...
I would want to be in the sun in the pool, too, but, yeah, I don't know. Depends on how warm the pool is, I guess.
All right. Yep, great, okay. Does the applicant, do you feel you have clear direction?
Yes, I think we do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, then, with that, I think, so we, our next item is commissioner comments. Any, any comments from anyone?